You better.
Ninety-six, and ninety-six long says office plan.
Yeah, we'll see. No trouble.
Akeisha.
It's working out pretty good.
We had a lot of fun.
I saw too much of you.
Lot of fun.
Yeah, you had a double header Saturday. I'm surprised you guys could move Sunday.
They didn't cancel the game Friday night until nine.
Friday night.
Well, we had to recapture.
Gets canceled.
Yeah, you had to talk about how you would.
Saturday morning.
Making sure the clip was in the right position. I was too.
Oh, man.
We were thinking.
Having the appointed time of five thirty, I'd like to call the Tuesday, August twenty-nine, two, twenty-twenty-three Committee of the Whole, uh, to order. Would you please stand with me and pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Mister Clerk, will you please take the role?
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Rockford.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman Nautriano.
Here.
Alderman Carlson.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mister Chairman, quorum is present.
Thank you. I'll accept a motion for the approval of the August eighth, twenty-twenty-three Committee of the Whole, quitting the whole meetings. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. And I want to wish my wife a happy birthday because I didn't do it back then.
Happy birthday. Mister Chairman, if I can, I'd like to make a motion to move Agenda Items twenty-twenty-three, three-nine-six and three-nine-seven to the front of the agenda.
Second. Could you give me the numbers again, please?
Yes, Agenda Items twenty-twenty-three, three-nine-six and twenty-twenty-three, three-nine-seven, which are on page seven of the agenda.
I have a motion on the floor to move ordinances twenty-three, twenty-twenty-three, three-ninety-six and twenty-twenty-three, three-ninety-seven to the front of the agenda. Um, is there a second?
Yes, second.
All the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Mister Clerk, will you please read those?
Twenty-twenty-three, three-ninety-six, an ordinance authorizing a subrecipient grant agreement, twenty-three dash hour dash zero-zero-zero-two, helping hands to operate an emergency shelter, coordinate services for unsheltered homeless from September eleventh, twenty-twenty-three through January first, twenty-twenty-four, utilizing community development block grant funds in the amount not to exceed ninety thousand dollars through the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Motion for consent. If they move the second, we send twenty-twenty-three, three-ninety-six, uh, on to the council that do pass recommendation for consent agenda discussion. Hearing no further discussion, all those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, three-ninety-seven, an ordinance authorizing execution of agreement with ZNS fifty-one LLC for redevelopment assistance in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars for the property located at two-fourteen South Sixth Street, utilizing central area tax increment finance funds through the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
Is there a motion?
Motion for consent.
If they move the second, send twenty-twenty-three, three-ninety-seven on the council that do pass recommendation for the debate agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. We will now return back to the regular agenda. Mister Clerk, is there any presentations?
There are no presentations.
Would you, uh, the next we have ordinances tabled to remain in committee, Mister Clerk, could you please read those ordinances?
Twenty-twenty-three, zero-eight-six, twenty-twenty-three, one-seventy-three, twenty-twenty-three, two-oh-one, twenty-twenty-three, two-oh-two, twenty-twenty-three, two-oh-three, twenty-twenty-three, three-twenty-two.
We'll now move to ordinances for committee consideration.
Uh, Chair.
I'm sorry. Go ahead. I didn't see. I'm sorry.
I tried. I'll leave next time, figure. Um, I just, real quick, Corporation Council, I'd asked, um, which of these ordinances under our requirements is past that, that staying on by default deadline? Um, and I know you've been busy, but could we get that for the, the council meeting?
Yeah, we've, we remove, or we have deadlines that are set. I can, I can forward you those for all the ones remaining on committee.
I think, yeah, anything that's past that deadline should probably just be withdrawn and can be reintroduced if it needs to.
Yeah, that's the dates that are on there where it says held on three-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three. Six months from that would be nine-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-three.
Right, so that one is, is coming up. That's, that's what I'm trying to say is.
Right.
That ordinance.
Yeah, they're on there. So you can look at it and all of them that, when they reach the six-month, uh, deadline, you'll be able to see when they are.
Okay, so I, then the question is, is that automatic or do we take action on those dates? My understanding was they just came off the agenda.
You'll need to take action.
Okay. All right. Well, then I just want to make clear that as, as these dates come up, I do think we should be reviewing them and, um, either, you know, extending if, if need to or withdrawing them so that the tabled ordinances doesn't, doesn't get quite so long.
Alderman Gregory.
I apologize. Uh, my question, question hasn't been answered. Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinances for committee consideration, Mister Clerk.
CWLP, twenty-twenty-three, three-seventy-six, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of reconditioned transformers from various selected vendors for a two-year timeframe in the amount not to exceed six hundred thousand dollars for the Office of Public Utilities. Move for consent.
Second. It's been moved the second. We send twenty-twenty-three, three-seventy-six on to the council that do pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, three-seventy-seven, an ordinance accepting proposal number UW twenty-four dash zero-five dash purchase and installation of triple-well boat dock with JLS Marine Incorporated in amount not to exceed eighty-nine thousand four hundred and sixty dollars for the offices of Public Utilities, Springfield Fire Department and Springfield Police Department. Move for consent.
It's been moved the second. We send twenty-twenty-three, three-seventy-seven on the council do pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, three-seventy-eight, an ordinance accepting bids and authorizing contract UE twenty-four dash zero-six, three-six dash fencing replacement at Jackson Substation with Amco Fence Company in an amount not to exceed fifty-seven thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars for the Office of Public Utilities. Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved the second. We send twenty-twenty-three, three-seventy-eight on to the council do pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, three-seventy-nine, an ordinance approving a mitigation agreement with ICG Illinois LLC in regards to the restated and amended contract for the sale and purchase of coal with Arch Coal Sales Company Incorporated for the Office of Public Utilities. Move for consent.
It's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's moved, moved, moved the second and, uh, to send twenty-twenty-three, three-seventy-nine on the council with what, debate or consent?
Consent.
For the consent agenda discussion. Alderman Conley.
Thank you. I just, Clerk, please note I will be a present on this one.
Noted.
Both is voting for the consent. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
General City Business, twenty-twenty-three, three-eighty, an ordinance authorizing payment of one hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars for settlement of system, Central District of Illinois Federal Court Case nineteen dash CV dash three-zero-nine-three, Andrew Dunleavy versus the City of Springfield and James O. Langfelder. Move for debate.
Second. It's been moved the second. We sent twenty-twenty-three, three-eighty on to the council that do pass recommendation for the debate agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Mr. Chair, I believe there's a speaker for this, uh, topic.
Is there a speaker for this?
There is. James Langfelder.
I didn't see you sitting back there.
Well, thank you very much. Uh, good evening, everybody, and thanks for putting on the debate agenda. Personally, uh, this is my own personal opinion. Uh, I think it should be appealed. The case should be appealed. And, uh, one thing with regards to the ordinance to add clarity, it should include the jury's judgment. And so I did, uh, bring the amendment, uh, to add that language, uh, as for clarity and add transparency. And if I could, just pass it out real quick.
Sure.
That's right.
I'll take five.
We got you.
And currently, the, uh, where, the fifth whereas, I'm going from memory, just, uh, list Mister Dunleavy's, uh, willing to, uh, accept the settlement of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. I think it should, uh, read, um, and it's on the document coming around. And again, you can discuss it next week. Where to read, whereas the jury awarded a judgment of one dollar against the city and zero dollars against James O. Langfelder. And whereas the city and Mister Dunleavy are willing to settle this lawsuit in the total amount of a hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars for lost wages and attorney fees. And then you can go on from there. But in it, my own opinion, in addition to the plaintiff and attorneys should, uh, uh, provide an itemized invoice that they haven't already, that should be included with the ordinance, but I don't know legalities with regards to that. But again, personally, I believe the case should be appealed, but if the city council wants to settle the case, the ordinance should be amended as requested for clarity and transparency. So, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, three-eighty-two, an ordinance approving the appointment of Kevin L. Coon, PE, to the Building Code Board of Appeals. Move for debate.
Second. Been moved the second. We send twenty-twenty-three, uh, three-eighty-two on to the council do pass recommendation for the debate agenda. Any discussion? Is, is Mister, uh, Coon here? Okay. Hearing none, all the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. I think we gotta go back to everyone.
Three-eighty-one, two. Three-eighty-one.
All right. Twenty-twenty-three, three-eighty-one, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Mark Vasconcelles to the Building Code Board of Appeals. Move for debate.
Second. It's been moved the second. We send twenty-twenty-three, three-eighty-one on the council do pass recommendation for the debate agenda discussion. Mister Vasconcelles, you want to come up here? Please just state your name and.
Uh, good evening, Mark Vasconcelles.
Just tell everybody why you want to be on.
Uh, well, I've served on the, the Board of Appeals for twenty years. I'm a professional engineer, born and raised in the city of Springfield. I've owned a small business in the city since nineteen eighty-four, and now I'm a partner in a larger engineering firm, and I've just enjoyed being on the, on the board and working with the community on issues, uh, related to the, the building code.
Any questions?
Thank you.
I have one quick question. Alderman Gregory.
So, uh, Mister. My friend, um, Mister V. Um, so, so you'll be on a, a part of a board, and, and normally, you know, these type of things, you know, are, are not a hot topic, but I think it would be, um, some interesting times. I, I don't know if you will be handling some of the, um, disputes and things that we get for, for some of our building, building codes and things. Will you be on that, that board?
In twenty years that I've done this, Alderman, the, the, um, the most common is a fence around a pool at the lake.
Okay.
And, and the ordinance says that you're required to have a fence around a pool, and the, uh, the committee will meet with the property owner to make sure that they do the things they need to do without blocking the view of the lake. Um, other instances we've had, oh, gosh, in the past twenty years, we've had somebody that didn't want to put a window well in the basement and the code required it, and we said, you know, for public safety, you've got to do that. So it's just when they want to appeal the, the, the building code.
Thank you.
We will meet with them and tell them the reason they can or they can't.
Well, thank you. Thank you. That really, really helps me out understanding what that would be. Thanks.
Any other questions? Thanks, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, three-eighty-three, an ordinance to increase the number of Class-A local licenses by one for Roots Latin Grill, LSA, doing business as Sukavon, located at four-one-one-seven West Walbash Avenue. Move for consent.
Second.
It moves the second. We send twenty-twenty-three, three-eighty-three on the council do pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing none, all those favor signify by saying aye. Aye. All opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, three-eighty-four, an ordinance to increase the number of Class-D local licenses by one for Eagle Golf and Grill Incorporated, doing business as Eagle Golf and Grill, located at thirty-nine forty-one Pintail Drive. Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved the second. We send twenty-twenty-three, three-eighty-four on to the council do pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing none, all those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, three-eighty-five, an ordinance authorizing a subrecipient agreement, one-oh-two-three-oh-one dash five with Memorial Behavioral Health and Payment in the amount of two hundred and fifty thousand five hundred and five dollars pursuant to ICGIA, grant number one-oh-two-three-oh-one for the Springfield Police Department.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Motion for debate. Been moved the second. Uh, we send twenty-twenty-three, three-eighty-five on the council for the, uh, debate agenda discussion.
Who is the second on that one? Thank you.
Alderman. Hearing discussion, hearing none, all those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, three-eighty-six, an ordinance authorizing, authorizing a subrecipient agreement, one-oh-two-three-oh-one dash two with Washington Street Mission and payment in the amount of three hundred and seventy-seven thousand nine hundred and thirty-seven dollars pursuant to ICGIA, grant number one-oh-two-three-oh-one for the Springfield Police Department.
Move for consent.
Second. It's been moved the second. We send twenty-twenty-three, three-eighty-six on the council do pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion.
Yeah, I got a question. So he did.
Alderman Purchase.
He did motion for a debate on twenty-twenty-three, three-eighty-five, but it goes with the same grant adjacent number.
Who's he?
Uh, you.
Alderman Gregory?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Um, I, I can explain myself if, if I may, Chair.
Sure.
Chair. Um, I, I just have some questions on, um, not only, uh, three-eighty-five, but three-eighty-seven. Um, I, I, I have full respect for Washington Street Mission and what they do, and I think the, the premises of the grant and what, what that's for fits that. I do have some questions on the other two, um, that, that I will talk with Corporation Council about and be ready to make my vote next week.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, back to, uh, twenty-twenty-three, three-eighty-six. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, three-eighty-seven, an ordinance authorizing a subrecipient agreement, one-oh-two-three-oh-one dash one with Solid Rock Youth Transitional Services and payment in the amount of five hundred and eighty-seven thousand five hundred dollars pursuant to ICGIA, grant number one-oh-two-three-oh-one for the Springfield Police Department.
You retain a motion.
Motion for consent.
Second.
Move the debate.
Second. It's been moved the second. We send twenty-twenty-three, three-eighty-seven on to the council with the, for the debate agenda discussion.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Mister Chair, if, if, uh, I don't know if the police chief can answer this or not, but, uh, you know, I've been around a long time and dealt with a lot of different groups, but I'm unaware of who this Solid Rock Youth Transitional Service, who are they?
Well, I'm gonna touch a little bit on some background, but I'm gonna let Deputy Chief Stunkel talk specifically, um, as the grant goes. Uh, some of you may remember, we had, we're here, uh, when you all approved the acceptance of this pilot program from the state of Illinois. We're one of four cities selected, um, to create a, we're given three million dollars to create a co-responder program of our choice. Um, we utilize the homelessness epidemic, uh, here in our community, and, um, as you notice in the ordinance that you, um, put on the consent agenda back in May, it had all the lists of the agencies that were going to be paid. So essentially, what we did is we took, uh, our subject matter experts on homelessness, which would be our homeless outreach team, uh, and their contacts in our community, the ones that we'd already established working relationships with, uh, that were helping us through the homelessness crisis. Um, and they were essentially, um, made aware of this grant. Um, they had the option to come up with proposals, proposals that they then had to submit to the state, and it was ultimately the state that decided, uh, which agencies would receive funding based upon their proposals. So, that's the, uh, shell of the grant. I'm gonna let Josh talk specifically on. Do you want to talk about Solid Rock or?
Solid Rock, uh, Youth Transitional Services addresses a very specific need in the homeless community, and that is foster children. And it was one that, when we began this, I didn't have a lot of, uh, past knowledge of or understanding of, but when you talk to, uh, some of the people who are dealing with our homeless community, it was definitely a gap in the services, and so that is why we chose to fund them, but that is the focus of, uh, of that group.
So, so what are they providing? I mean, what particular part of the homeless, I guess? I don't know.
Um, specifically towards kids who are aging out of the foster system and don't have anywhere to go. So they will be providing services and, um, I believe housing, I'd have to look specifically into their, uh, their agreement. Marsha Anderson, who heads that up, said she'd be willing to come and talk, and we could do that next week if we need to.
Yeah, I, I would appreciate that because I would like to, well, how long have they been around this Solid Rock Youth, uh, Transitional?
I don't know the details on that.
My question, my, my problem with this, a lot of money. This is a lot of money, and I've, I'm from Springfield banner all my life, never heard of this group, so I would like for them to present or do something. So, but we have it on debate, so we'll, we'll be able to take care of that. And then, you know, questions like, well, how, how often do they age out? And how many age out? That would be a part of this, you know, problem. So, but we can deal with it next week if you would.
I would suggest that you have them here next week, and there'll be other questions, and, and, uh, would that be okay?
Yes, that's fine.
Yeah, they said they'd be willing to be here, so it's not an issue.
Sure. I mean, Alderman, uh, can you have Memorial come too as well?
We'll let everyone know.
Thank you.
Any other?
So, I, I just wonder. So, so part of my concerns, Chief, and I, I asked for the, um, you know, we have correspondents by email, asked for the original agreement. I, I just feel like that this, um, granted, when it was submitted, for some reason, it is sort of different from the original goal, um, of, of what that co-pilot, co-pilot program was, you know, originally, originally to be, and I could be mistaken, but, um, it, it's sort of going off, off scope a little bit. I have, uh, um, some definitely experience with foster care and aging out in foster care and, and things of that nature, and I, I definitely, definitely know how important that is in our community. Um, but I, but I, 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 I just, I just feel like we, we, we are shifting so many funds to, to, um, and we have some other funds for it, and, and, and what I haven't seen is, is us do a lot of, um, the things that we've talked about with violence prevention and, and really what ICGA does. I'm, I'm sort of curious how, you know, um, we, we got the funding so fast, you know, um, with this, when I know there's other, other ICGA grantees that's sort of struggling in that matter.
All right, I'm gonna cut you off. Keep in mind, this is a pilot program we were selected for by Governor Pritzker in the state of Illinois. This has been ongoing for well over a year. Uh, every facet of this grant was approved by ICGA. This is not something that we just said, let's pick A, B, C, and D. This is, uh, has went through the entire grant process, proposals, they, again, these organizations had to submit proposals to the state who then in turn accepted their proposals. Springfield Police Department simply is overseeing, uh, this entire, um, grant, if you will. Again, I, I'm, I'm not the subject matter expert when it comes to homelessness, and that's why we rely on these agencies within our community to help us with some of these problems.
I totally understand, and I think we have some great agencies in our community to really help with, um, people experiencing homelessness. Um, that's why I was, I had no problem approving Washington Street Mission. Um, but, you know, I, I just have some questions for Solid Rock Youth Transitional Services and, and how effective, um, this will be. It's a new, it's a new business that just started last year, early in twenty-twenty-two. Um, looking at this paperwork, it, you know, it said the grant, uh, agreement fiscal year was, um, twenty-twenty-three, and it, it has the date of one eighteen twenty-two. So I'm, I'm just curious to make sure that, you know, we're seeing the original, um, grant information that was originally submitted. Um, just from my review, I am reviewing what you sent me today. Um, but that's where those questions lie from, is, is really, um, you know, that we stay on track with what that's, what that's for. So, thank you.
I think, uh, you know, when we started going through this and we started receiving proposals, it started with us receiving notification that we were going to be getting this money. We, uh, decided, we already had a co-pilot, um, co-responder program in the works, social workers riding with police officers. Um, we had other funding for specifically towards violent crime. And when they said, hey, we've got three million dollars towards a problem in Springfield, you picked the problem. We chose homelessness. We started reaching out to partners who were already working with our homeless outreach team for proposals. We had several proposals. We sent several of those to ICGA for approval, and they denied many of them. And that's why some of these numbers, when certain proposals got denied, then we spoke to some of the groups whose proposals got improved and said, how can we expand your program? And so that's where some of that comes in because ICGA will only take some of those proposals, um, other things they weren't willing to fund. So that therefore pushed some of those up. The grant had very specific parameters, um, one of those being crime victims. Um, so you see sojourn that comes in there, who you don't usually think about as maybe homeless, but there are crime victims who become homeless. And so they be, you know, they submitted one, ICGA approved what they had. And then other priorities that we had, you had to have a social worker involved in the program. Had to be social workers and police officers working together. SIU School of Medicine is getting a bulk of that. I don't think you guys have chosen debate or consent on that. We had to have social workers. We needed that, so we reached out to them. They were able to provide the social workers. The program theory is rather than them riding with police officers and going out on the street where maybe they might encounter somebody, we're gonna use the Washington Street Mission, have the social workers in the mission where the homeless people are already, one hundred and thirty to one hundred and sixty people a day who are coming through the mission. We'll have social workers in the building who can meet with those individuals and really catch them before they become in crisis is the goal and the hope of that.
I appreciate you. Thank you. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all the favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty-twenty-three, three-eighty-eight, an ordinance authorizing a subrecipient agreement, one-oh-two-three-oh-one dash three with the Board of Trustees of Southern Illinois University on behalf of its School of Medicine and payment in the amount of seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars pursuant to ICGIA, grant number one-oh-two-three-oh-one for the Springfield Police Department. Move for consent.
Second.
It's been moved the second. We send twenty-twenty-three, three-eighty-eight on to the council do pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion.
Yes.
Alderman Williams.
Just real quick, Mister Chair. So, Chief, this is, I mean, this is what you just was referring to. These would be the social workers that ride with our police department out on the streets. This amendment here that pays, uh, the school for the social workers, correct?
Not for riding with police officers, but meeting with the individuals who are in, who are suffering, whether it be crime victims at the mission.
Okay, so.
We're remodeling part of the mission so that we can have offices there for the social workers and the officers to be present and, uh, meet with individuals there.
Well, so, so, you know, uh, uh, if, if we could have them come Friday, I mean, I don't, I don't think I can, would hold it up on debate, but, so I've always advocated that we need them talking to the individuals on the street, you know, these social workers, these mental health workers, and not, you, I, I'm not feeling the impacts is what my argument has always been. So we're gonna give, uh, what is this, seven hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars to the school for social workers to meet in an office somewhere?
We have a, uh, we currently have a co-responder program where we have social workers riding around with officers, meeting with individuals who are in crisis. So we've got that covered through another grant with Memorial Behavioral Health. This one, trying it a different way, see if we are more successful. You know, you kind of get a comparison then, what's better? Using the social workers out on the street, waiting for a crisis to happen, waiting for them to meet with individuals, or focusing their time where the individuals are, where we know the individuals are gonna be at the mission, as I said, one hundred and thirty to one hundred and sixty a day. We know that there will be people there that they can meet with who are already part of that community, who are utilizing those services. We can get them directly into them at that location.
Well, you know, like I said, this is a consent one, and that's fine. I appreciate you, uh, Mister Chair, but I, I just do want to start feeling some impacts with all these different layers and, of what we're doing. I've been telling the consortium, uh, I think it's getting worse, not better, so maybe this will work, but be aware. I will see.
I, I think that it's a, a question we hope to see an answer to, you know, are we utilizing the social workers' time best in a squad car, or are they, you know, focusing their time and energy, you know, to those specific times when we know people are there? Are we gonna get more results? And really tracking those two and comparing them, what we've already been doing with the homeless outreach team is really, so we've got a social worker embedded with them, you know, we're, we're doing something that not really, to my knowledge, any other agency in Illinois is doing, having three separate programs, we're gonna be able to compare them to and find out which really is the best way moving forward.
Yeah, we really should see some impact.
Before we, uh, go to this gentleman, Alderman, Alderwoman Purchase.
Thank you. Josh, so after this gets started, can we just kind of get some quarterly updates on how the impact is going, or?
We, we will have to report quarterly to the, uh, for the grant submissions, so that is something that, uh, we can provide. is something that we can provide. We also have been in discussions with a group who is hopefully going to help us with some of the analytics on what we're receiving and the impact that we're having.
Okay, thank you.
Please state your name for the committee.
Yes, sir. How you doing? My name is Michael Newman. I am the homeless outreach team coordinator for the city of Springfield. Good evening, all the persons. I just wanted to add, I heard your question about, you know, social workers going to the, the missions and things of that nature versus being on the street. Just wanted to let you know that over 34,000 individuals passed through Washington Street Mission last year. We may not see all of those individuals, and I mean, not reusing the services over and over, these are people who came, it was individual names, there were over 34,000 people. These places like the Washington Street Mission, Salvation Army, a lot of the unhoused do not make themselves known on the street during the day, so it is very difficult to find them. They don't trust, so they hide in the woods, they hide in abandoned buildings, but they will utilize these services because they have to eat, they have to seek medical attention. So if we're not inside of some of these organizations, we will miss out on helping some of those that are really needed.
And, and some of these 34,000 are the ones breaking into homes and, and squatting and, and living out in those homes and, you know, hanging out and, and doing that kind of stuff in the neighborhoods that I'm trying to clean, clean up in, in Ward Three. So you be catching them in, if they go to the mission, correct? Is what you're saying to me, it's better to try to catch them there.
Well, I'm not saying that it's better to try to catch them there.
Well, I'm asking are they the same people, the same population?
I'd imagine so, being that, you know, the homeless population is kind of throughout the city, so if you're asking if it's the same people that are getting into some of the abandoned homes, I'm, I'm sure that there are some of the same individuals that are getting into, into some of the abandoned homes. However, this, since I've been on, which is approximately a year and a half, I know you said that you feel that it's getting worse. We've connected over, over 40 people with their families out of state. We've also connected more people just this last year than the last three years with healthcare services. We've also housed more individuals in this last year than we have in the last three years altogether with the help of other agencies as well, like Helping Hands, Salvation Army. So I, I know that the, you know, there's always going to be the influx because we do have all of the ability to help people. So, you know, we've got other agencies, unfortunately, bringing people to the city of Springfield and letting them out in the public. So we find these people, we help them out, and sometimes we can get them to California, sometimes we can get them to Texas with their mothers or fathers or grandparents who haven't seen them for upward of 20 years. I sent a gentleman to Mississippi, hadn't seen his children for 40 years.
Wow.
We're reuniting families and, you know, we're making a difference out there, and, you know, I, I hope that, and, and I welcome anyone to call me in for a discussion or to come right along with us, because you don't really see the impact a lot of times unless you're right there. And when you have a young woman or a young man that's out there homeless on their last, and, you know, sometimes with children, and you have to get them into shelter and you make that difference that day, those are the things that won't be seen. What will be seen is the person panhandling on the corner, the people sleeping outside of Walgreens. You'll see that, and, and, you know, that, that is a problem. I absolutely concur with that. However, what's happening behind closed doors is a much larger facet of what we're dealing with.
Thank you for sharing that, Mike.
That's awesome.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. And I guess my concern is, in Ward 10, I see, you know, in the far southwest side, we, we do have homeless people, you know, they're, they're out there, we, they're occasionally sleeping on the sidewalk of one of the, one of the strip malls out there, and, and my concern is, you know, they're not, there's no way they're going downtown at night, they're staying out there. That's, that's quite, quite a hike for them.
They, they get bus passes, bus tokens, and they, they absolutely use the services.
I just want to make sure they're getting services. That's, I, you know, and, and I try to call when I see, see someone just more, I'm more concerned about them getting services, because I'm, I'm worried that they're sleeping in the woods, you know, out, out there's a few places, you know, and, and we just, you know, that's my big concern with them. And, and so I, I understand the purpose of this going, you know, you can see more people at, at, you know, the, the shelter than you can if you're driving all around and trying to grab people, but I do, I do think there is times when we do need to go to, you know, maybe Ward Nine has, has some out, you know, north, northwest part of town, or, you know, some of the outskirts. We got, we got to make sure we do get the social workers out there or get the services, you know, at least to where they can talk to them, or, you know, try to convince them to, to use the services that we provide.
And I'm glad that you mentioned that, because we do that. We also have an outreach team with all the other agencies. We go out once or twice a week to those areas. I've been in the woods multiple times. I've been under the bridges and, and all places where I patrol in here 11 years, didn't even know some people were hidden. And as, as far as the sidewalk, I just want to address that, because that's been an ongoing issue. If it's on private property, we have to get with the owners to do some things, but if someone is sleeping on public property, which we have a lot of that downtown and things of that nature, the state of Illinois accepted in 2013 the Homeless Bill of Rights, and I've explained that to, to some, and the homeless are allowed life-sustaining activities in public. Laying down and sleeping is one of them. So to go to that person and move them along, if we cannot offer them a bed and shelter at that time, that is a violation of the 14 Amendment rights, and it opens the city to suit.
Right.
Some cities have been sued, Chicago lost a couple of years ago to a gentleman that they moved along and moved his things. They lost, I believe, upward of $600,000 to this, to this gentleman. So, you know, they have private rights on public property.
Well, thank you for what you do. You guys are, are great, good piece of the department.
Thank you. We, we enjoy doing it.
Alder, Alder Person Conley.
Thank you. First of all, Chief, I, I think you understated the department's achievement in, in getting this grant. You said one of four statewide?
That's correct.
So, this is, and, and I appreciate my colleagues' questions. We want to make sure that, that money is making an impact and that, that we're seeing improvements in, in our community, because people experiencing homelessness are part of our community. But I would like to, first of all, applaud you, Officer Newman. Your, your job is difficult, and, and appreciate you doing that. I will talk to you about a ride along after the meeting. But I want to applaud your department for being, showing leadership and trying different approaches to how we address this issue, that it is, yes, the police are absolutely involved, because that's who people call when they have a problem and an issue and a concern. We'll call your department, but some of these issues are not, you know, require this kind of co-responder model, and I'm excited to see how this works. One of the, you know, we've, we've done a lot to, to try to, to work this into our policing model, and I think it's really critically important. I, the other, one of the other ordinances that we put on consent tonight, where we'll have Helping Hands, we'll have the Overflow Shelter, we'll have Behavioral Health with that Overflow Shelter again. These are getting at those underlying targets of what everyone talks about with a mental health crisis that is impacting and compounding on our streets. And, and mental health doesn't always just mean, you know, we have stereotypical images of what that is. Sometimes stress and trauma and repeated trauma that builds and builds and adds a level, so it's not these kinds of services where you're talking about, we've got a variety of different agencies that you're working with. Very excited to see Sojourn on this one. Women who are experiencing domestic violence, and especially those who have children, are an extremely vulnerable population, and I'm thrilled to see this next, the next ordinance coming in to include them. But I just want to thank you for, for showing the kind of leadership that we do need to really make meaningful improvements and meaningful impacts, and I look forward to, I think, again, my colleagues are absolutely correct. We need to be asking these questions. We need to be making sure that, that the dollars are, are hitting where they should, but this is a very interesting approach. I'm, I'm, I'm hopeful that we'll see impacts and looking forward to the quarterly reports, so please do include us on those. Thank you.
If I could just offer a brief comment, and it would start by saying, I'm fortunate to be the leader of this organization, but really it's the men and women out there on the street, day in and day out, like Mike Newman, like Deputy Chief Stunkel, and all the others that put forth the, the effort, not only to keep our citizens safe, but to protect our citizens, all citizens, especially those who are most vulnerable in the homelessness community. We are on the cutting edge of law enforcement in Springfield, and I know that maybe we don't have anything to compare that to, but law enforcement is so much more than putting handcuffs on people and taking people to jail, and we recognize that in the city of Springfield, and I know you all recognize that as well, but that's, that's my goal as a leader of this organization, is to utilize every facet possible when it comes to our citizens here in Springfield.
Thank you for that.
Yep, for sure.
Alderman Gregory.
My, my last point. My, I've known you for a long time, and I know you, you, the 34,000, and you're saying those are all individuals and they could be staying in Springfield and be homeless? And the reason why I'm asking, when I was working on this with Mr. Saban going through the thing, is we was throwing together some numbers, and we was, for us to achieve what we thought we had, we would need 700 housing units of some sort a year, a year.
Yes.
If it's 34,000 folks plus the 300 undocumented or whatever we have, then that would take us approximately 50 years to achieve what we're trying to get to. So.
Well, to answer your question the best that I can, not, not being the numbers guy, you have to understand homelessness is categorized in a bunch of different ways. If you have a woman and her children fleeing a domestic situation, instantly they're categorized as homeless.
I get it.
You know, children who go to school and sleep from couch to couch to couch within the school district are considered homeless.
Thank you for that clarity. Thank you. I appreciate it, and I understand where you, you know, where those numbers come in. And, and my last point is, especially for this group, I'm just asking questions for my own dollars, so I can make informed decisions. And, and Chief, I support you. I've always supported you, and when I ask questions, and that goes for any of our directors, I'm just asking so I can be informed. I, I hope you guys don't feel attacked or anything like that. We're just, I just have to ask these questions, and it's all good. All right? Appreciate y'all.
Any further discussion? Hearing not all the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-389, an ordinance authorizing a subrecipient agreement 102301-4 with Sojourn Shelter and Services and payment in the amount of $878,104 pursuant to ICGJIA grant number 102301 for the Springfield Police Department.
Move to consent.
It's been moved to second. We send 2023-389 onto the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all the favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-390, an ordinance authorizing execution of a second amendment to the master agreement with Mutual Aid Box Alarm System, M A B A S, a statewide organization of fire departments that provide mutual aid to one another in times of severe emergency or other disaster for the Springfield Fire Department.
For consent.
Second.
It's been moved to second. We send 2023-390 onto the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all the favor signified by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-391, an ordinance authorizing the purchase of two 2023 Ford interceptor utility vehicles from Sutton Ford Incorporated in the Fire Safety Division under State of Illinois Joint Purchasing Master Contract 22416-CMS-Boss4-P-41049 for a total contractual amount of $83,440 for the Springfield Fire Department.
Entertained motion.
Consent.
It's been moved to second. We send 2023-391 onto the council due pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. I have one question. Mike, is this already in the budget? This a budgeted item? All right, thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing not all the favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
2023-392, an ordinance dissolving a business district realtor's occupational tax, a business service occupational tax, and a business district hotel operator's occupation tax within the boundaries of South Central Business District.
Entertained motion.
Well, Russia's for debate.
It's been moved to second. We send 2023-392 onto the council for the debate agenda. Was there a second?
Second.
And seconded. Any discussion? Alderman Gregory.
If I may, I, I sent Corporation Council some information. If you could, send that to the rest of the council, but it was, it's just highlighting the differences between the old agreement business and, and the new one, so we can understand. And, and, you know, I, I just think a move like this, we, we should take our time with, and for me, I'm still going through that information, and I thank Corporation Council for sending that. You know, this project came along, and, you know, I remember vividly, we, we talked about this project, and former Mayor Langfetter was told to sign it within a week, and we thought we would have shovels in the ground by, by July. That's not happened, and that's, we're, we're seeking the extension, and that's fine, but I think we, we owe it to our constituents to do our due diligence, because, you know, at this point in time, you know, we're, we're at another step to try to, to do this. And, you know, for me, I just want to make sure it's right, and we're not getting ourselves too deep in, into a situation, you know, for, for something that may or may not happen. And, you know, I would, I, you know, I think, you know, as hard as we're working for, for this sports complex, I would think that they would be here to speak on it, you know, and, and give us an update and saying, hey, this is what we ran into, and this is what we need you, you know, the council to do for us to make this happen. And, and, and that's the only reason I think it needs to be on debate, for us to review the information, vote for grievance, and make sure we're there. Thank you.
Alderman Hanauer.
Thank you. This, what, what we're doing is, we're simply, we're, we're abolishing the current one and, and starting a new one, so that the clock starts ticking and it goes 23 years. And that's what they need to get the financing. They, they were not allowed to, my understanding is, they were not allowed to break ground because they did not have the financing. The banks didn't want them to do that. The longer we wait, the, the, we see the interest rates going up, and that hurts them. You know, everybody, I get calls once a week, a couple of times a week at least, or I get, you know, I was out this weekend and people wanted to know, is this going to go? I think we got to move on it, and, you know, we should have had it done before, and, you know, then things could have gotten, you know, they could have gotten going earlier, and we wouldn't, we wouldn't be saying what's, what's going on here, you know? But we need to get this moving, and I'm, I plan on supporting.
I, I, if, I'm the vice chair, so I, I'll just give a feedback. I'm, I'm not a no or a yes, I just think that, you know, if that is the case, then we should have probably seen them in July, since that's where we left off with the understanding. And I, I get it that they've communicated that with you and maybe some of the others, but they haven't communicated that with the body as a whole. And, and, and it, we, we probably would, would have this done and consented and moved on, had they came and been up front saying, hey, this is what we need in July. We're, we're almost to September.
But they have, but we had, we have a certain, I think, and correct me if I'm wrong, Corporation Council, but there's, there's certain rules that we have to, to abide by, by the Department of Revenue that manages these business districts. And one of them is, we had to have a formal meeting, you know, on this project or on this, on this business district, which we had to, we, you had to put it out in the paper, you had to do all of this. And that's what we did two weeks ago or whatever. And then we have, once, once we do that, then it's, you know, three weeks, in this case, four, because we had an empty council, you know, week, that we had to, you know, it just takes time to get them through. But as, we couldn't do anything until we had that, that, that hearing. So am I correct with, on that, Greg?
Right, so we have to, the, the business plan that I shared with you, we had to have a public hearing on that before we took any official action on the proposed business district plan.
They could have at least, and my final comment, and I know, all the women know Charles White, and I apologize, but my final comment is, you know, we've, we've done everything we can as a council for this project. And as last I heard, we had agreement in July that ground would be broken. If it changed, they could have at least sent us a simple email and said, hey, we can't get it done, we need to do this, this, and this, you know, and that's, that's all I'm saying. I, I just think that, that was, would be justly due for, for them to do it. That's my comment.
Alder Person, not grounded.
Thank you, Chair. So I would just like to say, I, I appreciate your concerns, Alderman and Gregory. I would like to know, I would be interested to know why this seemed to, like, come out of nowhere for their, for the bank, and, and why we had to go back to the drawing board. nowhere for their, for the bank, and why we had to go back to the drawing board, why they wanted the full twenty-three years. Hopefully someone can answer that question for me, but regardless, I think this is a good idea because it's, it's not putting the city out of anything, it's just expanding the area, and I think regardless of whether this complex happens, it's gonna be a good thing for that area of MacArthur and Stanford, and it's going to hopefully attract businesses that are gonna benefit the whole, like that sort of area of town. So I would kind of ask everyone to sort of divorce this from the sports complex if you can, because I think the revised business district is going to be good for the city in general, whether or not the complex happens. Thanks.
Alderman Williams.
Well, I'll just say to you, Alderman, that I think this is not on the city, this is not on the council, this is on the developers. When they were here way back, when they promised Donilon, you know, they were gonna get it done, and we figured it up to July would be when it, when the shovels would hit, we asked Jim Langfelder how long it was gonna take him to sign, he said within a week, and we had this thing going, and we already knew that we was living and trying to do something in an area that has been failure after failure after failure, and you wasn't an Alderman, but the fact is, two or three others have tried it out there. I think it was a good thing and should be a good thing, but right now, I think we're going above and beyond to get something done that maybe they should have knew about financing. Most developers are required to have the financing in place before we do half of what this city council has done. So I'm just saying, we can't divorce it. Why didn't they know that about the business district and the situation? And then like Alderman Gregory saying, where are they? How come they have not been in here explaining themselves to us? All along since I've been on this council, and we've been talking about legacy shields, whatever you wanna call it, sports complex, they have been taking their time and getting their way with us on everything, and then they continually, what's the update today, corporate council? You know, we're gonna pass this, and they promise, boom, we're gonna go right on into, or if something else come pop up that says, oh, we need to come back to the city council because, can they get the financing or can't they?
Well, this is, this is what's been asked of us in order for them to get the financing. So this, this makes no guarantee that they have financing in place, but this is what the city needs to do in order for them to go obtain the financing.
And we're willing to do this for all developers, correct? We're fair, so we're gonna do this anytime developers run into these kind of situations, we're gonna go through all these one hundred changes to make this thing happen that obviously, to me as a developer, if I'd known the reputation of what happened out there before, I definitely wouldn't be taking us through what they're taking us through, but, you know, it's no one's fault up here, I still do think it could be a good project, but I'm tired, I'm tired of excuses and the changes and the this and that, we just have to do it. I can remember when Alderman Hanauer said, come on, guys, when they were here, you gotta, you gotta get this thing moving, and we're another six months out. Thank you.
Alderman Donilon.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Needless to say, this is a spirited, a spirited topic for the city of Springfield, and, you know, one of the frustrations I've had is, you know, anytime you go out, I have, and I've said this in this chamber before, I have relatives, my brothers, my nephews, they're traveling all over the, all over the Midwest, playing baseball in Bettendorf, Iowa. I talked to a friend of mine earlier this year, I think it was probably about April, May, he said he's been to Bettendorf, Iowa three times already this year with his daughter playing softball, and, I mean, I think, you know, needless to say, this could be a game changer, but we're all frustrated because it does seem like this lingers, there's cynicism in the community because of past projects at the site, and we just want something to happen, but I think we'd be remiss if we didn't say, I've heard, and I'm one that tries to look forward and not, not worry about things that happened in the past, but I've heard that there's been conversations with the developer that the city just had the ability to extend the business district by council action, which is obviously not the case, hence the discovery that we needed to create a new business district. I heard nothing about that when we had this discussion on a prior occasion in this chamber, it was, it was, we're gonna move forward, and the assumption, and what I hear, the rumblings in the background was, we can just do it with council action, and that wasn't the case because the statutory authority is not there. That's why the new business district is needed, because without the full twenty-three years, it helps the, sell bonds, it helps fund the project, and that's been clearly defined, but I'm telling you this, I've, I share your frustration, Alderman Williams, because it seems like we, time and time again, have this project before us, whatever the reason, and there's always one more thing to do. This better be it, because this thing needs to be moving, if we are fortunate enough to pass these ordinances to create the new business district and shut down the old one, let's get earth moving and get this project underway, and if not, let's just, let's just call it a day and move on. I agree with your comments, the business district can be beneficial to others as well, that's clear, but anyway, I urge your vote, aye. Thank you.
Alder Person, Natrangelo.
Thank you, Chair. Yeah, I just wanted to respond to Alderman Williams. I completely understand and respect your frustration, and that's why I think of this as something that's gonna benefit Springfield regardless of what happens with the sports complex. I don't think of this as a favor to them at all, I'm, I have my eye on other things that could come to our part of town that would be beneficial to the central and southern part of Springfield, so I encourage your vote.
Alder Person, Connolly.
Thank you, and I think maybe someone from Economic Development could answer this, but my understanding, just to clarify, Alderman Donilon, this twenty-three years of the business district was part of the very beginning, you know, back in the day, agreement that we made, so the fact that we now have to hold a public hearing and go through the correct process for this is just us meeting our obligation that we agreed to as part of the original deal implementing this, and I don't know if, did Val Yezel leave?
No, she's here.
Sorry, Val.
She's hiding.
I just want to be clear, this was part of our original development agreement.
It was original agreement back in, like, December of twenty twenty, I think, maybe.
Right, and, and at that time, this council agreed that there would be twenty-three years for this to go forward on.
That's what we knew, that they had asked for, twenty-three years.
Right. If we were to not adopt this, how much time is left on that business development?
Let's see, it started in eighteen eighty-nine, so twenty-three fourteen, so we'd have maybe seven or eight years maybe left.
So seven or eight years, so in some ways, it could be said that the city council, the city, has not met its obligation that we agreed to at the beginning of this process. I mean, seven years is not twenty-three.
Right.
So.
Yeah, it was brought up at that time, that we knew that that was, and we also had found out at that time that there was no mechanism, like the TIPS, we can go and renew a TIF, but we'd also found out at that time that there was no mechanism in place at that time to renew a business district. It indeed would need to be dissolved and then a new one created.
We couldn't have just tacked on another.
No, no.
Okay.
There was no mechanism at the state level.
I wanted to clear that, because I was, I was at ninety-nine percent, so.
Thank you, you are correct, yes.
Very much.
Thank you. Any further?
And I just want to bring it to your attention, too, again, this is a business district, and, and I had just spoken with Corporation Council earlier this afternoon, and we both agreed, if, if something would happen, we can dissolve this business district early, we don't have to take it out the twenty-three years, but our hope is that we can bring, as Alderwoman Natrangelo stated, we're hoping to attract another, several, many more businesses to that area.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-three, three ninety-three. An ordinance approving the dissolution of the South Central Business District.
Entertained motion.
Second.
Mr. Chair, I would make an ominous, ominous motion to place three ninety-three, three ninety-four, and three ninety-five all on debate.
It's been moved to second for an ominous vote on two, three ninety-three, three ninety-four, and three ninety-five. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. Mr. Clerk.
Twenty twenty-three, three ninety-four. An ordinance established in the South Central Business District Two and adopting the South Central Business District Two Plan. Twenty twenty-three, three ninety-five. An ordinance imposing a business district realtor's occupational tax, a business district service occupation tax, and a business district hotel operator's occupation tax within the boundaries of the South Central Business District Two.
It's been moved, it's been moved to second. We send twenty twenty-three, three ninety-three, three ninety-four, and three ninety-five on to the council with a, consent or debate?
Debate.
Debate, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it.
Twenty twenty-three, three ninety-eight. An ordinance authorizing supplemental appropriation for the Office of Planning and Development in the amount of one hundred and twenty-six thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, grant activity authorized by ordinance number ninety-two dash zero three dash two three.
Entertained motion.
Move to consent.
Second. It's been moved to second. We send twenty twenty-three, three ninety-eight on to the council to do pass recommendation for the consent agenda discussion. Hearing no discussion, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, the ayes have it. That concludes our ordinances for consideration. Is there unfinished business? Is there any new business? Is there citizens to address the committee?
I'd like for a point of clarification, if I may, Chairman, to Alderwoman Connolly, any ordinance or resolution that remains in committee for longer than a hundred and eighty days from the date of the initial assignment to the committee shall be removed from the committee's agenda unless within the hundred and eighty-day period a majority of the committee agrees to extend the time period for consideration of the ordinance or resolution and additional hundred and eighty days.
Thank you, Clerk, that was my understanding, I wasn't sure, so I was gonna check that.
Okay. And any movement before the hundred and eighty days obviously would take action from the committee. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other, new or old business? If not, we'll move citizens to address the committee.
Yes, Teresa Haley.
Good evening, my name is Teresa Haley, I am president of the Springfield branch in NAACP as well as the State Conference. Our address is eight oh one, South Eleventh Street. I am here for a couple of reasons. One is I need city council's support not to put two storage garages behind a national monument. It is disrespectful not only to the NAACP but the community of Springfield. We have been working since two thousand and fourteen to make this dream become a reality. The nineteen oh eight race riots led to the start of the NAACP as we know it today. We have been around for a hundred and fifteen years in this community, and we are the oldest, the boldest, the most loved, the most hated civil rights organization in the world, and we take pride in that because our goal is to help all people, not just black people, it was founded with black people, white people, and Jewish people. People continue to be discriminated against, racism is well and alive. As we think about what just happened this weekend, Dr. King's, the Sixtieth March on Washington, unfortunately, I couldn't be there, I was there for the Fiftieth March, but at the same time that was going on, look what happened in America down in Jacksonville, Florida. Enough is enough. We love our community, and we need all of us to stand together, so I'm asking the city council to vote no when it comes to putting parking garages, storage garages behind a national monument. I grew up in the John Hay Homes, and people who live in Madison Park Place and on the east side said, Teresa, if they don't listen, they don't do anything, we'll come and protest with you. We don't need to protest, we just need to ask you all to do the right thing for all of Springfield, so thank you for taking that into consideration. The other thing that I want to talk about is some of the, the bills that are going on and some of the grant money that's being utilized and moved around here in Springfield. We've been made aware of it, we get lots of calls, several people received the marijuana grant, the cannabis grant the last year, and I was one of those individuals. We were great stewards of that grant, and we want to see that grant continue for people who most need it, to make positive movements in this community. We are still looking at purchasing some projects and some properties such as Dr. Lee's home. We do not want to see that turned into a convenience store or a liquor store. It is historical to the black community in Springfield. Dr. Lee was the first black physician here in Springfield, and we take pride, and a lot of us grew up under his toolage and leadership, and we want to see that building used as a medical facility, a training facility, so we ask, when people are just going around purchasing up things on the east side because it's cheap and no one else is interested in it, we're asking the city council to please say no, please check with the pulse of the community. And I want to thank our Alderman, Sean Gregory, and even Roy Williams. Last night, we had a meeting, and several people came out and talked about issues on the east side that you may not be aware of. This high-speed rail thing is a wonderful thing for Springfield, but let me tell you what it's doing to our NAACP building. It's creating a lot of cracks in our foundation, the vibration is already there, so when the time comes, we're gonna ask for that wall, that silent wall, to be put up, and we know that the city can do things like that. We're also going to ask the city to look at Nineteenth Street tracks. I remember when Mayor Houston was in office, they talked about removing those tracks. Those tracks are still there, the east side continues to be a dumping ground. Enough is enough, it is the gateway into Springfield downtown and to the west side of Springfield. We do not want the Ten Street corridor or Nineteenth Street tracks to be that redlining district. There was funding set aside for them to make underpasses on Cook Street, on Laurel Street, on South Grand, and all of those areas. Now we're hearing rumors that that's not going to happen. We're asking that city council hold the railroad administration to their feet because this is important. Even my church, we're in church on Sunday morning and Thursday night for choir rehearsal, and the building shakes, and we have cracks and other things in our foundation as well. We're also asking in terms of the cannabis funds, if any member of city council has anything to do with cannabis funds in terms of working for a cannabis company, being a lobbyist, when those issues come up, you are not allowed to vote on that. That is a conflict of interest. The NAACP is watching not only locally, statewide, but nationally, we're seeing a lot of the funds being redirected. If the funds were purchased for CJA or if they were purchased for the CARE Act, we want to ensure that those funds go for what they were intended to, if not, we are requesting that those funds be returned back to HUD or whoever. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Haley, thank you for your time. I can tell you that Mayor Busher is looking for different sites for those, for those buildings right now, so that's not a, that's not a definite thing that's happening, okay?
Thank you, sir.
And Alderman Williams.
Yeah, so thank you for that, Chair, so that kind of answered my question, I was gonna ask Public Worth their, their timeline, or C W, whoever's garage, C W O P, because in every meeting I've been in way back in my faith coalition days and arguing with the railroads and getting it recognized and all the way up to today, there was never no garages in the picture, so I was trying to figure out where they came from and how they got on, but I'm glad to hear you saying the mayor's ahead of us on that, on the cracks. Alderman D'Essenzo, Alderwoman D'Essenzo, she used to constantly say to me, that's okay, Roy, they're coming your way, they're coming your way, and, you know, the guy in the wheelchair used to come up with, and so she had a lot of this same thing about these vibrations and these cracks, so this is nothing new about when they do that. The thing is, you gotta get ahead of it right now and make somebody aware so inspectors can get out there, take a look at it, whether they from Hanson, the city, I don't know the protocol, but get that documented so that you can get those things replaced, because Chris D'Essenzo did get some success on some of those homes over there that went through a similar thing, and then finally, I'll just say, on the marijuana, on the marijuana, the original, was before my time, we went through one round, and then now we're at a halt. I don't understand why, you know, we have a group of apps in, and I'm watching, and we're gonna see what kind of protocol, because we did change administrations, and they have a right to do things a little different, so I am trying to figure out and find out to make sure that they don't redirect. Now, there's some new activity on this council coming through, I don't understand it, so I don't really comment, and I leave that up to Alderman Gregory, so thank you for sharing with us.
Alderman Gregory.
Just real quickly, Mr. Fuchs, can you give us, when you get a chance, some information from Hanson on, on where we will be at with the Nineteenth Street tracks? It was a topic of conversation at my last eight nights meeting, and, you know, just straight out, you know, the east side community often feels that, you know, and I've heard this with the black lights, they go down Capitol, it goes down Capitol, it was supposed to go past Martin Luther King and it stopped. it goes down Capitol, it was supposed to go past Martin Luther King and it stopped for whatever reason, as well as this railroad thing. Because before my time, Roy worked on it really, really hard. And I guess the 19th Street tracks were supposed to be finished. But of course, when Hanson was here last, they had their doubts that that would happen. At the very least, you know, I told the constituents last night, at the very least, that I would fight for to ensure that the underpass is done and we can at least get those trusses redone and shape up those, those tracks. I know on the Red Path, you got that situation out there in your ward as well with the railroad coming through there. I think that's important for us to at least have an answer if it's going to happen or not, and then we'll go from there.
You know, you know, while we were going through the high-speed rail projects, I know Mayor Langfelder was pushing for the 19th Street tracks also. I don't think that's, I don't, I don't know that there's, if there's rumors flying around there. But I've always thought that our next move was to go to the 19th Street tracks to get those fixed up. Because the underpasses are not, not up to speed, they need to be fixed. And you hear me say it, every time we talk about something, don't forget 19th Street, right? Every time we purchase buildings and houses down 19th Street, I say that's got to be the next project. Because they're, they're in bad shape, those bridges are in bad shape. I have the, the tracks that run through Hazeldale, across 72, that through Hazeldale and back in that way. I know that there were some problems with the bridges on the west side of town and Hazeldale Bridge area is in need of it too. So believe me, I can, I'm not speaking for everybody here, but I can just tell you that that's something we want to see happen, okay? So that's my opinion, all right? Alderman Williams?
Yeah, I just, real quick, wanted to make sure people understand where this is coming from. So when the guy came and gave us the update on the 10th Street, I asked about the 19th Street, because he was telling me about my area, about Pillsbury and the overpass. You know, we're going to go on during them, we're going to go over and all that. But then he used the language of, and then we're going to stop in 2025 it'll be completed, or something like that.
That's just, that's just for the 11th Street track.
Right, right. So I asked, well, it can't be completed because your pamphlet that you sold to the city has all three tracks, it shows you everything. 19th Street tracks on there. It shows those underpasses on there, on there, a little, every time you went to the ball center or wherever they had the presentation, it was on the wall, it was on there. So I do think that this mayor will support us to, to make sure that we kind of continue on to finish the whole project. At the meeting last night, what the elders were upset about, that they say this happens all the time in Springfield. They sell it one way, when they get it in and they get what they want, then it stops. I don't want this to be, this is too major for this to be one of those. You know, and the example they were using was Capitol Street lighting and the special sidewalks and all that stops at King Drive. People that served on that committee say, oh, that was supposed to go all the way up through, up Capitol to almost Worcester School or something like that.
You know, and that's the reason I said, we purchased buildings along that 10th Street, that 19th Street corridor. And the bottom line is that I'm for it, and I can't speak for the members of this council. But we know what's got to happen next. And I don't know what the funding sources are, but that's something that we need to take on base. That may be something we need to follow up.
And to be honest, he did mention that, I think he says some kind of coal company is going to close in 25. So it's going to be, there's going to be reduced traffic. And that might be why they may not want to, you know, continue on. But, but I think Teresa, when we get to that point, I think we'll be supporting, I think. But like Chuck says, I'm just one vote.
Well, I'm glad I can let you all have this lively discussion. So thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Alice Ramey.
Come on, girl, you're on us.
My name is Alice Ramey. I lived at 1212 South Livingston, Springfield, Illinois for 68 years. We're having a little problem with no chain dogs. My sister got attacked by a black lab, and I called the police and 911. They tried to help, but what I'm really talking about is the dog pond that they don't work to pick up dogs or write tickets. We have a leash law that if you don't have your dog or your little puppy or whatever you have on a leash, it's $250 fine. So this should be taken care of immediately because if my, my sister got attacked by them, I got attacked to buy them. And I've already talked to the police department already. And I wanted to tell you guys, because there is a lot of dogs running around in this city that are not being picked up too. And it is getting to the point where people in our neighborhood will not run. There's a man that runs every morning, but as soon as those black labs come out, he's on my porch. I mean, I don't think there, I don't know about them, I don't want them around, but they have to have a leash. Mr. Alderman, three, the address is 1224 South Livingston. Thank you and have a beautiful night.
You too. Any further discussion from the council?
Yes, Chair. I'll just say this, she's right, you know, we have a little problem. Again, it's an old problem. I don't know why we fool with that dog situation when we need to do something about it. I do think that it's manpower, but the nice lady that's over county health, she's very nice. But she says it's not a problem. But I don't know how a truck can be way out in the county and then get over here to catch this dog way over here in the city. And that's what we're feeling. The impact is as if they're not there, they don't write tickets, by the time they come, the whole situation's over with. You know, ousted, been bit, and it's over. So my, I just think it's something eventually the council's going to have to look at. I don't know if we do it at budget time or when we do it. But our, our current situation with animal control just is not working. Thank you.
Alderman Donnell.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I wasn't going to say anything about this, but we had a recent incident in Ward Nine with a recurring loose, and it is a pit bull, happens to be a pit bull. And it's very frustrating for the residents because the police do come out, animal control's even been out. And it's frustrating when the dog is continually let run in the neighborhoods, little kids in the area. It's frustrating, it shouldn't be tolerated. And so I'm trying to get, working with the PD to get to the bottom of really what happened. You got to, always got to do your research, and it's frustrating. But you know, we've had, I got a, I got a question the other day, I'm not being, trying to make light of the situation, but got a question today about loose chickens. That's an issue that I know Alderman Hanauer, he's the rooster guy, but it's something that, it comes back. And I had a goat, goat issue and these things, and they do come up. And, and you know, I know that's why we all got in the business of being older persons. But you know, it does make a difference in the neighborhoods when you have problems related to animals. And, and anyway, I just appreciate those who do make the efforts to try to make it better. But we got to do something a little bit differently because it seems like it is recurring over and over again at the same residence. And that shouldn't happen.
Alderman Hanauer.
Yeah, I've got kind of a different situation. I've got a situation where, and I've talked to Corporation Council, where I've got a neighborhood that they don't allow fences in the front yard, so they get invisible fences. And so they let their dogs out in the front yard. The dog, they had somebody new move in the neighborhood, doesn't like dogs. So what'd they do? They've called a bunch of times, all the same people, they call them in. And these, these dogs are on invisible fence. And if you've ever been, seen a visible fence, it puts a shock if you get close to it. And it really lets you have it if you, if you try to jump over, you know? And the problem of it is that, and this is something we're looking at, the, our ordinances don't allow for, to consider that, I guess, a barrier. It's not considered being on, like, you have to have your dog restrained. That's either a leash or a fence or something. But they, we don't have that electric fence on the, as part of a barrier is what my understanding is. And so it's funny because you guys say that they don't come out. And what I'm hearing from this neighborhood is they're, they're getting called out, you know, a couple of times a week. And it's for ridiculous, you know, complaints because there's no dogs running loose or just in the front yard behind their invisible fence, so.
Corporation Council, did you want to answer?
I was just going to say that that's the county's interpretation of what a fence is, that they don't, they don't count electric fences. That's not necessarily the city's position on what a fenced yard is.
Well, we need to make sure that they understand where we come from because they've threatened to take the dogs from the front yards, which first of all, when they pull that dog across the thing, it's going to light them up. You know, so, I mean, I, and look, I'm not, I'm, I'm just telling you, it's, so we got all kinds of different issues with animal control. You know, they do, I think they, they try to do the best job they can. I mean, it's, it's tough, it's a big county and, and big city, and there's a lot of dogs and stuff. So, you know, I, I would be more worried about the dog that bit Alice because I'd be afraid with her bite, she'd bite it back, but.
Alderman Williams?
Yeah, yeah, so real quick, so I think it's a technology problem because the electric fence has come up, but they have to be on a leash or something physical or in a fence that they can't get out of. Again, something physical, the guy that I dealt with, I dealt with the electric fence. And then I dealt with this new modern thing where this dog was going down the street, looked horrible, like he'll just attack you. Wasn't bothering nobody though, the owner was a few feet behind him. The dog was just chugging along. And of course, this Alderman, I tell him, hey, you got to get a leash for your dog. And he hit his, he, I don't know what he had, he hit his thing like, and, and it's in, it's in, in his ears, and the dog went straight and lay down. He said, I got something better than a leash. If that dog gets off course or does anything I don't like, I hit the button and it lays down. Because that pain's going to, you know, some people say that's cruel, cruel and all that kind of stuff. But I'll just say, corporate counsel, that's not a good answer. We think one way, but we didn't give the authority to the county. We have to get together with that. The administration needs to get with, I guess, Saiman County, if they have a corporate counsel, and work out some language to maybe update, are we going to be able to use these modern electric fences, these things in the ear? Because there's a lot of gadgets out there to control your animals now instead of the old tug and pull type thing.
So I, we are working on that. Our code right now says an animal's under restraint if one of the factors is enclosed in a fenced yard. And I think the county interprets that as a physical enclosure. And we've looked at it as the electric fences. So we're, we're going to do that and make this clear. Alderman Hanauer brought it up last week that really highlighted this section. So we are working on that to make it clear.
And just look at all of it, there's other gadgets. So that we're all on the same page when that animal control officer comes, or even the police sometimes. I think our community police officer one time told some people the same thing. I don't care if he is out using the restroom, he has to be on a leash. I don't care if he do have one of those, you know, monitoring gadgets, which I didn't even know exists. So I appreciate you going to meet with him. And hopefully, we can get some clarity so that the community won't be confused about it. And maybe that'd take away some of the criticism on animal control.
And you know, I've been on the city council almost 30 years, I can tell you, we've been talking about dogs, dogs for 30 years. So the motion to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye. See you later.